All right. This is a meeting of the Planted and Zoning Commission. Today is February the 4th of 2021. It is, uh, 6:01. First item that we have is a roll call, please.
Mr. Vidal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Erasmo Villarreal?
Present.
Jorge Dominguez?
Present.
Rafael Dueñas?
Present.
Abraham Lugo? Abraham Lugo?
Abraham is not going to make the meeting. Uh, he asked me to excuse him. He's working.
Very well. Johnny Narváiz?
Present.
Raúl Ugaldé? Raúl Ugaldé? Larry Doflina?
Yeah.
Carlos Flores?
Present.
And Ana Gabriela Villarreal? Mr. Chairman, do you have quorum?
All right, thank you. Uh, can we have a motion to excuse, uh, Commissioner Lugo and Commissioner Ugaldé?
Make a motion to, to excuse him.
All right, we have a second? We have a second?
Che con Dueñas.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. The next item. It's the consideration and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 21st of 2021, of 2021. All right, I'll give you a few minutes to look over the, uh, minutes and then, uh, we'll take a motion. All right, does anybody have any additions, deletions, or anything to the minutes?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Narváiz?
Second.
The motion, all those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. If none heard, the motion carries. Thank you. The next item is citizens' comments. We'll give it about two or three minutes. Kirby, you would advise me if you got somebody on the line, please.
Yes, sir, we will. And it's always a good time right now while we're waiting to remind the commission, if you're not speaking, to please mute your mic. Even though you may not be able to hear it, you may be putting feedback into the system, which makes it harder for the general public to hear and for your fellow commissioners to hear. And also just a reminder to you, Chairman, you can always ask for a, a negative, um, to just speed it up. Instead of asking everybody to affirm, you can see if there's any opposed. And then if they don't hear any, you can assume it's all positive. That's up to you as the chairman. You can decide to do it that way if you choose.
Good observation. We'll take your observation under consideration. Let me take this time to welcome our newest, uh, commission member, uh, Ana Villarreal. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for, for that. I'm definitely very honored to be part of this commission and very happy to see some familiar faces.
Good to see you. Good to see you. We look forward to working with you, uh, on the PNZ. Your input's very good because you do have a, an excellent background in, in what this is all about. Kirby, is anybody on the line?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we do have a person on the line. Um, they want to speak in regards to item 9A.
9A.
Amanda, could you please introduce them for us and then let them know when, when they're, when it's time to speak?
Yes, one more.
9A is the thoroughfare.
Sir?
Yes.
You're on.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. Everybody, Rolando, please?
Can you? Yes, um, give me one second. Can you hear him now?
Amanda?
I'm sorry?
Please allow him to speak. We can hear him.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so you all can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Rolando, please, for the record. I'm calling in, uh, reference to item 9A, uh, the thoroughfare plan. And, uh, I, I fortunately have had the opportunity to speak with Kirby just a little while ago. So my comments will be brief, but, uh, there was an item on, or there was a section of the, uh, master, the thoroughfare plan that showed Viasio to be a reduced roadway than what it is today. That's been corrected. And I just want to caution, uh, future planning like this, because as you know, the city of Laredo, uh, the RMA is trying to get this roadway done from High Road all the way to 35. They're working with TechDOT to try to get some additional funding. And if, uh, you know, we show it as something different than what they're proclaiming it to be, it could be detrimental to acquiring that fund. So I just wanted to say, and I didn't, again, it has been corrected from what I understand. And I'll see the presentation later on tonight, but I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we're very careful when we're doing these types of things so that it's not affecting the great or good of what everybody is really trying to push forward and giving some relief to a much needed congested area, which is the mine road. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Rolie. Uh, really appreciate it. Uh, we'll definitely be on the lookout for what you just mentioned. Thank you for your comment.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. The next item that we have is review and consideration of the following master plans. The, uh, review and consideration of Needmore Ranch Industrial Park Master Plan. The intent is industrial? Kirby?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. The app, for the record, the applicant is Steve Lamantilla. The engineer of record is Howland Engineering and Surveying Company. Approximately 150 acres located north of FM 1472 and northwest of Pinto Drive. The zoning for this 25 lot development is R1 and AG, and the proposed use is industrial. General location, aerial view, street view, and the proposed master plan. Comments from planning, water utilities, traffic safety, from Texas Department of Transportation, and the proposed motion.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the planning staff before I ask for the engineer of record? If none heard, can we, engineer of record? Is he on the line?
I'm trying to get a hold of him. I apologize.
Rafa, could you please assist Amanda?
I'm, oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Villarreal on the line.
All right, go ahead, Rick.
How are you doing, uh, commission? Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We got Luis Villarreal, Howland Engineering, um, um, here on behalf of the Needmore Ranch Master Plan. Um, I do have, uh, just a couple of questions. I don't know if anybody is, um, is, uh, on this meeting from utilities. Uh, but if there is a comment on utility number two where project subjects have been the line of sanitary sewer agreements, uh, it's just, we can get some clarification or maybe clarification for planning, um, on what that actually entails, because I, I believe that's an agreement to a master plan that not directly next, next to us, but close by. So I don't know if, uh, those get automatically adopted or we go back to city council to adopt our own agreement.
Commissioner, if I can, if I can comment on that, we do not have somebody from Water and Utilities here. If, if this agreement applies to this area, then if it's under that agreement, then, then they will need to pay those fees. If it's not, they won't. If the agreement hasn't been made, then obviously it can't be enforced. If however, that's not a good enough answer for the, the commissioner probably would, or for the applicant, probably would be good to table this until we can get some clarity on that.
Uh, I'd rather, I'd rather not table it. I'd rather just maybe expand that comment that we made. It's either subject to Pinto Valle agreement or our own as approved by city council.
I think the comment is, it stands.
Any agreement needs to be approved by city council, correct?
Chairman, Dueñas?
Yes.
Yo quisiera preguntar, vi muy rápido la ubicación, qué tan lejos o qué tan cerca, cuántas millas estás de Pinto Valle, el desarrollo?
This Pinto Valle, no está muy tan lejos al señor Dueñas, es más bien como, nada más, yo digo como media milla.
Media milla, entonces no es difícil que puedan entrar en los acuerdos de Pinto Valle. Ahí están todas las facilidades, este, creo que, creo que tenemos ahí ya todos agua, luz, todo. Este, pues revisen los acuerdos, pero yo no le veo problema porque ahí se está desarrollando bien. Gracias.
Yo, yo supongo, pero no sé si requiere algo este proyecto que a lo mejor no tiene los arreglos de Pinto Valle. Entonces nada más, a mí, no me preocupa mucho el, el comentario, más bien, le quiero agregar al comentario que, uh, vamos a usar los, los, los arreglos que ya tenía Pinto Valle o los que no está prevé, si council.
Perdón ingeniero, en inglés está bien, eh? Nada más, me cuesta mi pronunciación, pero en inglés está bien si puedes responder.
You're, you're, you're not, I, I just wanted to, to clarify the Pinto Valle comment. It's not that we don't want to agree to the Pinto Valle comment. We need to evaluate everything and ultimately what is approved, I believe, our own agreement by city council. So either we follow the Pinto Valle sewer agreement or as approved by city council, because I think our agreement has to go with city council either way. Is, is that still a deal for us? Well, I mean, it's what's better for the, the city. We just don't know if Pinto Valle has certain restrictions that we might not, are going to have in our master plan. So that way, we just want the, the comment to be expanded. Either we go with Pinto Valle agreements or the ones that are ultimately going to be approved by, uh, city council. Because city council ultimately, I believe, has the authority. Just in case those agreements are tweaked, as per utilities too, utilities might tweak them. We just wanted to make sure that we don't follow, if it's not required, everything that Pinto Valle has. So, um, that, that, that's my only thing. I wanted to see if we can elaborate it a little bit more, that, that, that keep it open ended to what city council approves, basically.
Rick, I think, I think what that comment is alluding to, if I remember way back, I think Pinto Valle was the one that took on the burden of all the costs. And anybody who was going to come in after that on those lines going back up to the plant that's up there, uh, uh, and I think that's what this is alluding to. And I could be mistaken, but I remember that there was some kind of reimbursement that was going to have to be made to this development, because they are the ones that fronted all the cost to do the sewer lines and stuff from the plant, uh, up there at the bridge. It has well. Yeah. Larry?
I think we did that. And what it is, is that Pinto Valle paid for the upfront cost to the extension of the sewer line.
Yeah.
And there was a reimbursement agreement that was done alongside it. And it already spells out the amount of cost that is shared by people tying onto the line. And, but I believe there's also a, uh, term agreement. And I want to say it was 15 years. Uh, maybe it's 20, but you need to look at the agreement to see if it's still in effect.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's what that was, that's what that was, Rick.
Okay, that, that's fine. If that was the agreement, like just a reimbursement agreement, that, that's black and white. That, that's, we do know that we would have to tie in to the lift station. Uh, I mean, the, the treatment plant.
Right.
So, uh, but yeah, that, that, that is not a problem at all. Whatever that agreement is on the reimbursement, it's been, it's been, um, it's already been written. And so, yes, we, we would follow that.
Okay, that's what, that's, that's alluding to, because that's what I remember from back then when that development got done.
Okay, we can go ahead and then, then agree to that.
I'm sorry?
We, we can, we can go ahead and agree to that comment. We can concur to that comment if that, if that's, uh, to that stage, that's definitely what it's saying.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Any other questions from the commission members from Mr. Villarreal?
I move to approve.
We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Che con Dueñas.
Dueñas, seconds. Those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. With none heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Is the consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item 6A, preliminary consideration of the Santa Barbara subdivision, phase one plat. The intent is residential and commercial. The, the applicant, TXIE Development Incorporated.
The engineer of record is Gera Engineering and Surveying. Approximately 66.79 acres located north of Rio Bravo and west of US Highway 83. The zoning for this 194 lot development is B4, R1, and R1A. The proposed use is residential and commercial. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, additional comments from planning, engineering and water utilities, additional comments from water utilities and traffic safety, parks and leisure, utility coordination, and Texas Department of Transportation. And the proposed motion and staff recommendation. Need to highlight on this one that staff is recommending denial, which is very rare. But the reason for this is that the, we, the applicant had brought this to you before and was asked to go back and work with TechDOT. And, and from all that we can see on the, on the submission, that was not done in an agreement with TechDOT. And, and the work to do with TechDOT was not reached. And so we are recommending denial that they, that, that you send them back to, uh, to do what you asked the first time, which is to coordinate with TechDOT.
Is the engineer on the line?
Yes. Good evening.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Fred, got it, got it, Jerry.
All right.
Well, we're, uh, we're, we're, the, the traffic study is, is being done at this time. Well, that's, I know, I know TechDOT has to, has to, has to have their comment, but I mean, they're not, I mean, they're not, uh, 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 denying, I, I don't see why, why the, uh, staff is, is recommending denial. It's preliminary. We're not asking for final approval. I mean, it's preliminary. We just go something approved subject, subject to comments, whatever the comments, uh, they are.
Let me ask you this, Fred. Where are you at?
The reasoning guide itself.
Okay. Where are you at with TechDOT? Because I know that this development is right there where the exit ramp is for Rio Bravo. And so I can see the conflict there and where TechDOT would want to have a TIA study. Uh, and you're already doing that, but I mean, it, it even involved removing and changing that, uh, exit ramp for you all to be able to get in and out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, 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 for my San Antonio is working on that. But, uh, I always thought I'd go through one stop shop and all that, so. And then finally, yeah, so. But, but if it's, if it's denied, I mean, we can't, we can't proceed. We can't go to, you know, we can't do anything. We're, we're, we're staffed, so.
Kirby, uh, let me ask you, uh, your denial is based right now on, on no, no feedback coming back from TechDOT? Is that your recommendation or?
Our recommendation is based on the fact that, uh, the TIA has not been completed. When the TIA is completed, then they'll be able to work with TechDOT on what the recommendations from TechDOT will be. They have not addressed comments from TechDOT sufficiently. And the purpose of a preliminary approval is to have those, those major decisions, uh, in place to guide how the development will, will do. It's not to wait till final. Final, when you get to that stage, everything should already be wrapped up. And, uh, what you asked them before, when this came for approval last time it was tabled, was to work with TechDOT. And while they're working on the TIA, that's good. They need to complete the TIA and then finish working with TechDOT. And that's the, that would be the time to bring it back. So it's not, it's not stalling. Uh, it's only just waiting for the applicant to complete what you asked them to do, and that is complete a TIA and work with TechDOT.
Fred, how far away are, is that TIA?
Yeah, but yeah, well, we're almost done, but, uh, but so that is, that's a requirement, yeah, the TIA before, before this supplemental?
Kirby?
In this case, yes, sir, because that is what, uh, TechDOT required. And it is what the Planted Commission asked the applicant to do.
Yo.
Hey, Mr. Dueñas, go ahead.
Yo, yo siempre he estado a favor del desarrollo y, y del crecimiento de la ciudad. Pero veo que aquí les, nos falta otra vez completar el TA y terminar sus trámites del, del día o ti. Estamos igual que la vez pasada. Yo recuerdo este asunto, no hemos avanzado. Yo le, lo sugiero al promovente que lo vuelva a poner table cuando termine el TA, lo traiga de regreso. Creo que es lo conveniente. Yo estoy a favor de, 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 de su desarrollo, pero no así incompleto. No, 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 nunca por encima de la seguridad de la gente. Entonces, yo le ofrecería o le propondría, le sugeriría que lo hicieran table y cuando avance, lo vuelva a traer a la mesa. Gracias, Chairman.
Gracias. Anybody else?
Erasmo?
Larry?
If I, if I remember correctly, this property is not in the city's CCM.
That's correct.
So the city has no control over the water and sewer delivered to this track. And in order to get that done, he's going to have to apply to the county and make sure that the county reviews his plat to, to give him the okay that they have the capacity to be able to allow this development to move forward.
Yeah. Yep. Uh, you know, I think, Fred, uh, there's a couple of big issues that you really need to get resolved. Uh, water and sewer capacity at the plant there at Drew Bravo. Uh, the biggest one too is also the, uh, the entrance and exit, uh, from TechDOT on TechDOT right of way. And those are kind of like big ticket items. How far, you said you're very close to getting your TIA finished?
Yeah, but, but that, that still has to be with, with TechDOT, the engineer from, from San Antonio, so.
Yeah, I know. The commission. Well, okay, well, I think, you know, where are you at with, uh, your water and sewer agreements? With the county?
The owner, he, he already has the agreements on that.
You already have your agreements, okay. So that's not, the biggest issue though is your entrance and exit off of that area right now. That is, it is, that, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of that exit, because I use it constantly. And there's a lot of traffic there. And I think it's in your best interest if you're willing to have us table this item until you get your, your study completed, uh, so that then it can move forward once your study's completed. But it's up to you what you want to do.
Commissioner, can I suggest if, if it is tabled, that we table time uncertain?
And approve subject to comments. But, uh, so we can, you know, proceed with a one stop shop and, and, uh, and whatnot, and also with the county. But, uh, I guess it will be due up to the commission.
Do you want the commission to go ahead and vote on the item the way it is right now? You want the commission to vote on the item? The recommendation is denial of this right now?
Yeah, huh? Huh? So it'd be, it'd be pretty much tabled, I guess.
So you're saying for us to table that time uncertain, right?
Yes, I, 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 yeah, time uncertain, yeah. We'll have to do, 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 so.
All right. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to table time uncertain.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Che con Dueñas.
Dueñas, second. All those in favor of the motion. Uh, all those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All right, motion carries, carries to table.
Commissioners, uh, just want to be clear, the, the direction there is to table that time uncertain when they resolve those issues, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
The next item is consideration of the following final and final replats. And we got 7A. Um, this is a final consideration, all right? Final consideration, Aquero subdivision, phase six plat. Ten is residential.
The applicant, Aquero? Rafa? Yes, sir. Um, may I suggest, Commissioner, did you want to take any of these items and?
We're going to take them all in sequence if it's okay with everybody. Can we take items 7A, 8A, 8B? Uh, can we have a motion to, to take all these items together? They're all final approved.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and the second, those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Can we have a motion now for approval?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Che con Dueñas.
Dueñas, second. All those who are not in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Moving right on to item number nine. Discussion and recommendation on the adoption of the updated future thoroughfare plan as Appendix B of the City of Laredo's comprehensive plan. Kirby, your baby.
Yes, sir. The, uh, thoroughfare plan, let me give a little bit of context. And I'm going to turn it over to my long range planning staff to take you through this. The, by, by the state code and also by our city charter and, and, and our city code, we have a few long range plans that we're required to maintain. One of those is a future thoroughfare plan, which designates where major roads in the city should be and need to be in order for there to be orderly growth and development. Now, there is no requirement as to when these plans are updated, but they should be regularly updated. The last plan was updated as part of the, the comprehensive plan in 2017. However, it wasn't maybe given the full attention it needed at that time, because that was a, that was a big undertaking, the comprehensive plan. So some updates were made, which I think were more, um, theoretical in, in what they wanted to do, but maybe not putting the time and attention that we've been able to put in. Now, before then, the plan, I believe, had been adopted previously last in 2012 or 2013. So I think the city, as far as I look back, has a record of doing these every several years. Our plan going forward is to update this plan annually. Now that we have staffed up and, and actually have long range planning staff capacity, we're going to be working on this regularly, at least once a year, maybe multiple times a year if there are big plans and developments we need to consider. With that, I'm going to pass over Jason to review. Jason is one of our long range planners here in the city, who works a lot with the NPO, but also does long range plans, on long range plans with the city. Jason, if you want to introduce yourself and share a little bit about how we got this plan updated?
Yeah, definitely. Good evening, uh, Commissioners and Councilor and, and everyone. Uh, what we have here is the update to the transportation plan, future thoroughfare. And what we did was really just kind of take what was presented in the comp plan and try to ma- match it up with what, you know, ground truthing. So matching it up with the floodplains, what was going on, you know, in regards to development, new developments that have been proposed or put into the ground since the comp plan was developed. And so we're just applying a little bit of, you know, that ground truthing to it, but as well as going a little bit further into, you know, looking at, will, will this road encounter a lot of elevation changes or those kinds of factors? So we took what was out there, refined it a little bit, but we also looked at what our stakeholders, our partners were doing in the NPO. So there's a lot of work done by the, you know, Web County, the RMA, as well as TechDOT. They've all got their projects. And so it was a blend of everyone's project. And this is, like Kirby said, this is preliminary. We just took what was out there and kind of deduced it into a common, common map. And then we're going to go and host these workshops with our, you know, our joint, um, stakeholder meeting and really iron out, you know, what's priority, what should take, what should go first. And, you know, something I talked to Kirby a little bit about is really providing these routes to serve what, you know, we've been talking about all these years. The example with like River Road, if you look at the map when it comes up, you know, addressing some of those issues that are ongoing and we want to connect, as well as the one that Mr. Ortiz called in and mentioned, the Viasio Road. A lot of work going in on that with the RMA. So continuing to.
To consider, Jason, if I can jump in, we, we looked at existing master plans and plats that are out there. We spoke with TechDOT, considered their plans and major projects. We, we reviewed the RMA's plans and projects and got their input. We got input from the county, from the NPO, from the general public. We had several meetings last summer where we invited the general public. We had maps up showing the major thoroughfares and got the public's input. We looked at growth trends and where the city's growing and, and where we need maybe a greater density of major roads and then where we don't. We looked at growth trends and where the city is growing and and where we need maybe a greater density of major roads and then where we don't. Because we don't, if you look at what the what the last update has, and I'm gonna show you what that looked like. It had a bunch of roads everywhere, but that doesn't really reflect where we're growing and where we're growing and maybe gonna have more density. That's why we need a greater density of major roads, where we're gonna have a more spread out population or development. We don't need as much of our major roads because those are very expensive, as you all know. We also looked and considered about boundaries and environmental, as Jason mentioned, all the various environmental issues that may impact the expense of a road. You know, we don't want to be building through a flood plain. So if you look at it, this was our previous, this is the currently adopted future thoroughfare plan that was adopted in 2017 as part of the comp plan. Now, if you look at that density of major roads outside of the city limits, the city limits are what's in gray and all of that that's in white is in the E T J. And then, of course, it had the outer loop, that's changed, you know, with Tech Dot's plans. But you can see just that density of major road, that's just, while in theory it it seems nice to have that much connectivity, that kind of expense all over the city is just, it's unrealistic. And if it's unrealistic, then it's unenforceable. So with a lot of hard work, uh, tens and tens, well, I would say at least a hundred hours of staff time going into this and reviewing everything and reviewing the meetings we had and getting input from hundreds of organizations, hundreds of people and and multiple organizations. We've developed a plan, a thoroughfare plan that is true to the comp plan, still makes connectivity important, but focuses on those areas of the city that uh, or make sure that we have that level of density in in areas where we know there's there's uh, where the development and growth is moving, as well as considering all those things we mentioned before. And updating our major roads with where we know they're gonna be today, like the outer loop, you can see is adjusted based on the latest plans that Tech Dot has. That's true not only for the outer loop, but for other major roads such as those with the R M A or anything else that we noticed might have changed. So this plan we're bringing for you today, we're bringing it to you as a recommendation to get your input and your recommendation to city council. We're gonna take it to city council on the sixteenth for adoption, but I want to make sure this is clear. This is not locked in for the next five years, you know, like the last one, it's, we're not gonna have that level of space. We're gonna be continually looking at this and continually updating it now that we have planning staff and capacity here to do this type of long range plan. With that, do you have any questions for Jason or myself?
I've got a question, Kirby. Uh, where is the projected outer loop going to intersect Highway three fifty nine? About how many miles out from the current loop that we have?
What I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna bring up a Google map version of this so I can zoom in and out a little easier. Uh, I'm gonna start with just the political base map, so it's a little easier to see these lines, but I'll I'll switch back over to the aerial view when it when it when it helps. So you're talking about three fifty nine?
Yeah.
And and where?
Three fifty nine and where that projected future loop, outer loop is gonna be?
So that's just past Cabeo's Recovery Service, if you know where that is on three fifty nine. Uh, past the Webb County Youth Village.
Okay, all right.
It's seven point three miles.
And it's, yeah, I know, I know where it is. The alignment then basically is almost the same as the one that's been there for some time. Really hasn't changed much. Okay, all right. Okay. And the reason I bring that up is because I think we might see an area of growth on that particular area going eastbound eventually, I think. Just because of land prices, but you never know.
And Tech Dot didn't have the two feasibility ones, we just chose the outer one. Nothing is, like we said, same stone.
I know, and and I agree with you that, you know, if you're doing every every twelve months or every that that makes it, you know, a much, much better.
Does anyone else have any questions for myself or the planning staff?
Yo, Duñez, pero no es pregunta, no es question, es una felicitación, congratulations. A Kirby, a Jason, a todo el staff de P and Sony, creo que es un un great job, creo que es un gran trabajo. Y ojalá cada tres meses nos pueda presentar así avances. Como yo veo que esto va a ser como para veinticinco años, entonces déjenme presumirle a mis hijos y a mis nietos que yo lo vi primero, ¿verdad? Y este, pero cada tres veces, eh, nos gustaría ver cómo van los avances, cómo van los overpass con el D O, con el Texas Dot. Los overpass que tenían ya planeados en la treinta y cinco. Y este, pero felicidades, joven, es muy muy buen trabajo y todo el éxito. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Muchas gracias, Commissioner Duñez. Yes, we do want to make sure we we bring this back to you regularly and we involve you in the future. We we knew a lot of changes that we needed to make here that are in the plans. But as we get into some of the areas where maybe the plans aren't spelled out, we still want to be looking at those with you. And so we're gonna be bringing this back to you, not not just annually, but probably more than that to get your thoughts. One of the things, one of the areas Jason and I have been talking a lot about is the north side of the city, because as you can see, the industrial is started to head east. At the same time, the city residentially is growing north. And what we, for the future, if we plan this area out well, we're not gonna have the same kind of conflicts that we have in the northwest where we've had residential industrial mix. We want to really avoid that on the north side of our town. So that that gives us a big question, how far should this industrial? How far should we allow it to move east? Uh, and and the residential, we want to work out those conflicts way in advance and because the zoning doesn't cover E T J, zoning isn't the answer, isn't the tool, but our thoroughfare plan maybe is because that's where we can plan these major transportation routes where people can make investments based off that, so that we don't have those, we minimize those conflicts in the future. So thank you, Commissioner Duñez. We will bring this back regularly.
All right. Does anybody else have any comments? None heard.
Ahora sí tengo un comentario.
Okay.
Eh, no puedes dirigir el crecimiento o el desarrollo de una forma natural. Yo estoy en la industria de de las bodegas y las bodegas siempre van a buscar las vías de acceso, en nuestro caso, al al cruce del puente, a Colombia, Utraville. Por eso estamos creciendo hacia allá, porque hacia allá es el cruce comercial. Y buscamos la conexión más cerca con la treinta y cinco para desahogar la carga y desahogar los los temas. Que tenemos planeado, que ya lo habíamos visto y y creo que se está trabajando, es hacer una calle muy amplia y muy grande en Vallecillos que cruja cruza el treinta y cinco y es la única fórmula que va a desahogar el tráfico de las minas. Empujar fuertemente el proyecto de Vallecillos. Sé que estamos creciendo hacia hacia el norte. Tenemos también el problema de la milla trece, que está igual, no es no es menor al de las minas. Milla trece tiene un gran problema. Hay que buscar las arterias que vamos a usar, las vías, los las calles grandes, amplias, buscar que sean calles quizá federales para buscar el apoyo de los grandes federales y estatales. Y porque ahí estamos el proyecto de un de un plan que se llama Majesty, que creo que le va a convenir, o Majestic, le va a convenir mucho a la ciudad de Laredo. Entonces sí creo que hay que buscar nada más que las arterias, siempre he peleado por las arterias, por las vías, por las calles amplias y grandes, y si pueden ser que la que la el gobierno federal y el estatal nos ayuden con grants, va a estar fabuloso. Y gracias, thank you.
Anybody else, anybody comments?
Uh, just I wanted to add to that. We're working collaboratively going forward, you know, we like Kirby mentioned, and we had those phone calls to make sure that we were pushing forth the best route that are gonna serve the industry. And so working together and being at a, you know, phone call away is gonna be helpful for us moving forward. So we're excited.
Jason, let me ask you, uh, based on what Mr. Duñez just said, the development of two thousand acres up there by Majesty, um, on this thoroughfare plan, um, are you guys planning a major arterial going out north of that particular development to get to thirty five? Is that?
So if you see that Uniro, uh, where they're at, that Uniro track, they have it continuing on to the, what used to be, um, where it is, the H R extension going east.
Right.
And so they can, it's proposed through the R M A to be a freeway, and so we just absorbed that as well, and it goes down all the way to a little bit south of the rail. So there's a way to north of town.
It's gonna need an overpass.
Yeah, to to answer your question on that one, Commissioner, and first of all, I just want to say to Commissioner Duñez, thank you, some good comments again. And for many of these, of the largest of these roads, it is all federal and state funding. If not all, then mostly all, and there's just a small contribution that comes locally. So we very much do depend on our state and federal partners. We work very closely with them. We want to have a very good relationship with Tech Dot and and I think they would say that we're we're making, that we're we're doing that. Now, to answer that question about the Uniro area, one of the big question marks right now, Commissioner, um, on that, Commissioner Villarreal, is that they're proposing right now to do a TERS for for that development. And that may change some of the infrastructure that's there because it will affect the funding that's available. And one of the things I think would be a good idea is actually to expand that TERS, to include a larger area and use those funds not for local roads within a development, but to use those roads to fix a regional problem, which everyone knows is that in that intersection, that overpass. You can get that overpass fixed and and the access to it, all of a sudden you open a lot of industrial area, not just a small one. So those are some of the suggestions that maybe may come through as some of this develops. And and which is why it's gonna be very important that we not wait three, four, five years to bring you this again. But we we update it regularly and bring it back to you often.
Yeah, yeah. And and like you said, I mean, right now you got choke points right there at mile marker thirteen, you know, you've got two overpasses to get in and out, but they're choke choke points right now. That's why I was, I'm gonna say about eight, ten years ago, and I think Larry will remember, we were looking at trying to get another overpass out. Uh, and it was probably closer to the Ruthinger prob- property, which is directly north of Unitec, uh, to give this area, you know, some relief. Uh, I know we had talked to Tech Dot proposing an interchange up in that area to help traffic movements. But with the H R road going in, uh, that might also, you know, if we can figure out how we can tie that in with the interchange, that would really help both sides.
I believe Commissioner Flores has a question.
Let him go ahead.
Commissioner Flores, you're muted. Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, thi- this was the item that the gentleman spoke about, the Vias Rio Road, early at the beginning of the meeting, is that right?
That's that's correct. Well, it's related. We were talking about the the overpass in Uniro, but he was speaking about Vias Rio Road, which is south of this development.
And how how does this, how does this future thoroughfare plan change or modify the original plan for that road, if at all?
It doesn't. Um, we we did have a a modification from it previously. But one of the reasons we reached out to the R M A previously and again today was to have them take a look at it and and make sure everything looks good and and they they had a comment regarding that. They wanted to see the classification remain. And so we said, yeah, you're right that, well, they shared the latest plans that that were available and we agreed that that to to keep the classification the way it is. So it wasn't an error as much as making this, making updating this process is not so much about, hey, there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. That's that's not true, although from one developer's perspective, it may be right or wrong, because right is if it benefits them and wrong is if it doesn't. But for us, for the city, there's not a right or wrong way. What there is, is you've got a lot of people together making making dinner. And we gotta make some compromises because Commissioner Flores doesn't like onions. And, uh, you know, Commissioner Villarreal doesn't like, you know, that. So we're working together, we're being collaborative, we're taking all the information, the best information we have, trying to work out a plan that makes sense and that at the end of the day is a compromise between um, all the interests at the table, but at the same time being conscious of the costs that we have to deal with. So we're we're, we have a lot of partners in this. And while everybody wins, if we have the best plan, there definitely will be some that would prefer to see a different alignment and we won't always be able to accommodate them.
Well, your your, uh, projected roads do have a little bit of a swing that you can do on them. I mean, they're just a projection right now.
That's right. When this actually comes to you, when you actually see this is when you get a development, a master plan. And they'll bring the master plan is, and one of our planning comments may be, they don't, they're not lining up enough with thoroughfare plan. And then it's this commission's actual responsibility to say, hey, I'm sorry, you need to align that better. Or you say, well, planning staff, thank you for your comment, but I think I see their reasoning on why we should depart from it. So that's where the rubber meets the road, is this planning commission in the future when development comes your way for review.
Good. We have a question from Anna. Go ahead, Anna.
Um, yes, I wanted to know if, um, among all the considerations that you've taken to update this thoroughfare plan, if you guys have getting any any information on like travel demand forecast from Tech Dot, um, and also if you've been able to show this, uh, to the the Tech Dot and also the traffic department to get some feedback.
Yes, those are great questions. We've met multiple times with both Tech Dot and the traffic department. We're meeting again with the traffic department after this meeting just to wrap up. And as far as do we look at the travel demand data? Definitely we do. One of the, one of the really great developments that's happening in our department is that because we asked the city council to give us some additional budget so we could, instead of consulting always, we could do studies in house, we actually now have the capacity to run those models internally. So we're in the process this year of of getting all that data back from the consultants and building the model internally. So while we looked at our TAS data and our transportation model, demand model data, we're gonna be doing that even more in the future for some of these roads in the exterior. Well, some of these we have, we haven't looked as closely as we've liked. That's why we're gonna bring it back in the future and be able to bring in some of that travel demand data even more. Uh, and uh, and and then share some of that analysis with you and get your input about it.
I definitely just want to add on that. We've been in also in conversation with the bridge department or, yeah, the bridge department and C B P. So we're getting updated information from them as well on just just the changes of or what are occurring at the bridges, right? The traffic flows and then the annexation patterns following those. So definitely a lot of insight in that, but like Kirby said, we're gonna be doing a little bit more in house now. We're just taking it all in house. So we'll be able to address some of those on a, on a shorter basis, some of the proposed routes and whatnot.
Primero, bienvenida, Anna. Qué gusto que estés con nosotros, Ana Villarreal. Este, y quería pedirle aquí a Jason y a y a Kirby que te den la bienvenida y toda esta información que tú pides del del D O T la tenemos, que ellos te la te la te la muestren porque yo sé lo que se siente llegar a tu primera junta de pizza. Así, bienvenida y correle la cortesía de de tenerle un pequeño entrenamiento y dele toda esta información, Anna. Gracias, muy amables. Gracias, Jason.
Thank you all. Thank you. Anna, from what I'm saying, I believe you were, you used to run the show here as well.
Yeah. She's got all the knowledge and she knows the drill.
I still see your name on some of the maps.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes. It's it's interesting to be on this other side, but, you know, we're both, both ends are trying to get to the same, to the same goal. And the funny thing is that you guys bring this before the commission today because today is National Transit Equity Day. You know, and it's important that, you know, we continue this legacy of connecting streets with people. So perfect timing, great work to to planning staff.
Thank you, Anna. It is a pleasure having you on board and, uh, what you can't do is tell the commissioners all the all the dirty things we say about y'all once the meeting ends. Don't let them in on that secret. Okay?
All right. Anybody else have any questions or any concerns or any comments? With none heard. Kirby, directives report anything?
Well, we would like a recommendation on this thoroughfare plan.
All right, then can we have a motion to, uh, recommend this thoroughfare plan to the city council?
Oh.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second advice.
Advice. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. With none heard, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Kirby.
Yes, so, well, again, like every time, I want to thank the commissioners. There are those from the public who are not aware that this is a volunteer position, you don't get paid. You do this because you care about your city, you care about the future of this city, and you take time out of your day, not just in this meeting, but also the time that you put in to prepare for this meeting. So I want to thank you as staff and and on behalf of all my staff for the time and effort that you put in. It means a lot. We couldn't do it without you, even though we don't always agree. Your role is very important. Your role is oversight over us. This is our job. We spend a lot of time at it. Sometimes, you know, we, uh, we think we're right because, you know, we we put so much time in it, but it doesn't matter if we're right or not because your job as citizens is to make sure that this process is done fairly and it's done equitably for all the interests at the table. And so we really appreciate that. We couldn't do it without you. So thank you very much. Other than that, I don't have too much to share, other than we've got a lot. Other than that, I don't have too much to share, other than we've got a lot of great plans that we're going to continuing to bring you and we're excited to bring you in the near future.
Very good, then. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion approved, Duñez.
Duñez, who's got it? Johnny seconds it. All those not in favor signify by saying aye. None heard. Thank you all very much.